Credit rating, okay? Well, we're creeping up. We're at five-four, five-five right now. You know, maybe one of these drop off, one or so, but we're gonna add a two million over here. So that number's not going down, it's going up. And if we continue to go up, if we don't get control of our expenses and start doing the right financially, fiscally responsible things. So, any questions on this before I move on?
I thought that was at six-three.
Go to the next one.
All right, Larry?
So, this is borrowing and transfer resolutions over the last, from 2017. So I picked that number where the loans were and just went back and pulled resolutions. We have borrowed eight-point-six million dollars or transferred out of our landfill fund. So it was one-point-two way back when. We pulled it down to one million, I believe, for the town hall design that never got built. And then we transferred another six, three-hundred-and-twenty-two from landfill. And then on the resolution, it says fifty-two police squad, two-hundred-and-thirty K town hall building improvements. So therefore, we're using landfill fund, which is not a never-ending balance. It's down to about three-hundred-and-fifty or so at this point. And I'm proposing of the six-hundred and some that was there, we're borrowing that to make this budget work this year to get us through twenty-six so that we can continue to work on lowering costs and bringing that together. But you can see all the loans totaling eight-point-six million. When you look at fifty million compared to eight-point-six, that's getting close to twenty percent of our limit. You keep on the path, I just, you can't keep doing that. So, you want, any questions before I move on? Go ahead. So these were some of the spending budget issues that we immediately identified at the workshop, okay? One of the big things is health insurance. We right now have what is in essence a PPO plan. Only pay, the employee pays some, but it's an expensive program. So we're, that's an action. We're gonna try and implement. And just so everybody understands, we are not, this is not to penalize the employee. This is to bring down our healthcare costs. And I think, Chief, you told me, McGowan ago, at one of your conferences, basically was able to go to a high deductible plan. And they paid some amount into seventy-five percent into the deductible, the high deductible. So they were keeping the employee, that was the insurance guy shaking his head. So they were keeping the employee as whole as possible in the process, giving them pretty much the same benefits. But the cost of the town went down a lot. And that was McGowan ago, I think. So we're looking at that aggressively to see what we can contribute to the bottom line in that area. I'm not gonna go through, these, I want you to understand that we're not sitting on our duff. We're, we went through at that point and we are working through the end of the year to bring down the costs. And then we were investigating this. But that didn't go anywhere, I don't think.
We're working on it.
We're working on it. Any questions here? Next slide.
Barb's got a question.
Oh, sir.
But how are we holding the line when we've got a credit card kiosk for the boat launch at twenty-six thousand, a town administrator for twenty thousand, and AB equipment for fifty thousand? I mean, if those are, if we're on such a financial cliff, those are things that we should take a breath and hold back. I mean, that's almost a hundred thousand dollars' worth of money that we could put in a fund balance, or?
So, I can answer that question. We need to restructure the way our town does business. And that is going to happen under my watch. Part of those costs you're talking about is to do that. Why have we had only one person in the business system for the last four years while we had a deputy clerk to be at it? There was, there was a request made by Chairman Clarkowski and attorney for the deputy clerk treasurer to be brought into the system. So that's, we are going to move that way so that we can start analyzing and looking forward to this. We, you can't, penny wise, dollar foolish is what comes with that to me. We gotta look at the things we can do to improve our operations. And if kiosks, one of the complaints, I don't know if it's complaint, an object.
At the boat launch, it is, but nobody's there to take the money and?
Well, and it's, it's on the honor system in a lot of way. The auditor talks about it's, and we're talking, this is forty grand worth of money, I think.
It's more than that. Fifty-seven.
About forty grand, it's twenty-six something.
And it's a big number that we should get control of. And how much are we not getting because we don't have controls? So I think, and we're borrowing capital funds for that. And I think we need to do that. And I think the board agreed that we need to do that to try and get control of our costs. So I think we're being smart with where we're spending money. And it's just not that much. I don't know, we'll go through, maybe I got it on a previous slide that can show you what we're doing. But any other costs, thoughts on this? Can you go to the next slide? All right, I checked that out because it's, I think it's gonna be up around where the dotted line is, but I don't have, I only have actuals to date around October. So here's where we've been. Police has been in this range, so you can see the gray. So we're up in this range for police and, that's police. Then we got building inspection. And I, there's nothing magical with the numbers. It's just was easy to pull the chart together using this. The fire and rescue is probably the key point. We're going through peaks and valleys on this capital. I know you two are trying to work with ETA, ESD to bring this into some more control. But there is a projection provided by the fire and rescue for capital going out, I think twenty years even. So therefore, we have an understanding of what that is. We're gonna lay that in on top of what we're doing for a town. We're talking about the police for capital, DPW for capital, and building maintenance for capital. Those are the three components that the town has mainly. So we're working up a schedule. We're gonna try and have that in first quarter put together. And then if you overlay these and look out twenty years, you should be able to come up with a level load that can go into that and pay for that without us getting with these peaks and valleys. Yes, sir?
If I could just ask one question, Joe. So, based on your color code graph there, fire and rescue, but that was, that's not an annual cost.
No.
That's based on what was purchased because of ladder truck and this and that, so that?
It's a peak.
It's a peak that was gonna be amortized over five years, ten years, whatever. That's gonna be what we're gonna be?
We're on the hook for that today. Or next year, sorry, with regard to this budget. That's true. Because we have not been doing the plan and we are not level loading. So if I've gotta have a million bucks, I gotta do the math simple here. Ten years, a million bucks, that's a hundred grand a year. If I'm putting a hundred grand a year over ten years, at the end of that, I can pay the million bucks. It's in a designated fund and I don't have to come after the public for that. So that is part of our capital. It's one of two major initiatives that I'm gonna summarize for you here for us in twenty-six that we gotta get a handle on. But yeah, this is a peak that we're experiencing this year. And we probably would have seen it this year if the fire company wouldn't have, or the manufacturer.
Manufacturers had come in on time.
Would've been here. So?
I understand we spent it this year on other things.
Right, and so without the forecasting, without the understanding of the budget, without this trending information, the board is up here unable to say whether we can approve something or not. So Todd comes in and says, I wanna brush mower or something and it's only thirty grand and we're getting a good deal. And so we're sitting here going, okay, how do we validate that? We just didn't have the tools to be able to validate. So one of the things that this year, in fact, I said because some of those DPW, one of the DPW purchases was a kind of a fiasco from my point of view. And so going forward, we will not spend anything outside the budget. If it's budgeted, got ladder truck, budgeted, we'll do it. If it's pumper, we're not doing it. It's not gonna happen. And that's gonna be a lot of thought if we are going to do it if it's outside the budget. So that's another area that we're trying to be a little more disciplined going forward. Any other questions on this? Yes, ma'am?
I'm having a hard time understanding the yellow and the green. So are you saying that's from purchase of a ladder truck?
That is our component of a ladder truck. Nine-hundred and nine, well, it's got some other, it's got operate, what else is in there? It's not just the nine-ninety-four?
Upper left corner.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Nine-ninety-four.
Yeah, so I did put it up there.
So it's capital expenses to purchase equipment?
Equipment at the fire department. And?
That's just our portion.
That's together, operations and capital.
Yes, it probably is both. This isn't just capital. This is kind of showing, I was gonna add a total on the columns and it just didn't, I didn't have time. But this just shows the expense, yes?
Merged with two other areas, right? And I think I remember hearing a few meetings ago that we're paying way more than the other groups are paying?
Well, we're paying, it's a percentage. Like I think our percentage is fifty-two percent right now. The village is forty, forty percent, forty-two percent.
Forty-seven.
And then Thomas Spring Prairie is another.
Eight.
Seven, right? That comes out, not right.
Whatever.
And that's not based on population, obviously.
Well, it's based on three different things. It's based on calls, it's based on?
Five-year average of calls.
What's that?
It's a five-year average of calls since we are members.
Yeah.
And it's in the call numbers.
It's like, it's an average of calls. And the real estate value and the total realized value, that's where we get hammered in the town because our realized value is like one-point-three billion and the village is like seven-hundred million, I think. So that brings us up. So that's what we're working on. I'm trying to work with them to get that equation changed because like last year for like EMS, the town had, I think, two-hundred-and-sixty-five calls or something in there and the village had like five-hundred-one. So my argument is why that's based on an individual, in my opinion, on the EMS side, not the fire side should be based on realized and property value. So we're, I got the boxing gloves on.
We went in with, we went in with the formula, looking at the formula. And they have the property value and improvements as two components at twenty-five percent apiece, fifty percent on calls. An ambulance call is a person, it's not a property, it's not a building. And so the no-brainer answer was take those out and put it all on calls. And we are credited with about a hundred grand. It's, so there's some merit in this. And then you were looking at it from just a call perspective. And then we were looking at other municipalities that are sort of using our services, but they're not part of the group, right? So there's just a whole structure that we're trying to look at that I think should have been probably looked at the last time we signed. But anyway, these are the constraints we have. Yes, Barb?
I understand you want to set money aside for future expenses. The ladder truck, a million dollars a year. A lot of people borrow for Barb's one-time hits. Years past, it looks like we're taking money from the landfill budget. If you can collect money for those one-time expenses down the road, what safeguards are there to prevent the next guy who's in your seat from taking the money from that fund to start funding other things?
You can't. It would be, well, you can probably answer better, but it's restricted, right? It's dedicated?
Yeah. The board would have to make a decision to do so. It wouldn't be just one person. The chair isn't in charge. He's in charge of running the meeting. The chair can't make an individual decision. So it'd have to come before the board and the entire board would have to vote on any issue.
But they couldn't, just like they've taken money from ladder truck?
Correct.
Okay. You could take it from dedicated, I thought a restricted or dedicated fund you could not touch. I thought that?
By a board decision? I mean, there's some stuff that is completely restricted, but some is in designated funds, say it's designated for fire equipment or fire and rescue. That money, if needed, could be moved to roads or something like that by a board decision.
Then we have to look at that. I, that's not what I had in belief. I thought we would be collecting for that expense. I don't believe in leaving government to control their destiny. It just, that doesn't make sense.
I didn't mean that you would do it, I'm just?
No, I understand, but it's a problem.
I'm looking at the process that's happened before.
It's a problem. And I, I'm trying, like, for the borrowing from the landfill, I wanna put a resolution and we're gonna pay it back. We can't just keep, you saw the other sheet. We borrowed, we didn't borrow, we stole five-hundred-thousand bucks out of the landfill to pay for things that I don't even know that anybody knew they were paying for with that money. So I, I think we need to be a little more fiscally responsible. That's really all I'm trying to do. And if there's ways to put controls in place, I'd like to say the board is very amenable to that.
Good question.
Yes, sir?
When we're doing all this borrowing, do we get a special interest rate? Are we paying what everyone else is paying for borrowing?
One of the things that was recommended was maybe next year, we look at all our borrowing and maybe take it to a bond and get it down into the two. We're not getting special rates. We're getting, we're going?
So what is our rate?
Five.
Five?
That last sheet.
Yeah, go back.
Well, then, rates are negotiated. I go out, I contacted multiple banks. I start with the local, or the board commissioner of public lands. They're a rate here. And usually our local banks under them, so we are getting the best rates. And we're paying less than Joe Schmo, our consumer, that would go up for a moment.
But they're not bond rates?
Yeah, so they're elevated.
One of the ways, and if you look at, okay, so we're, if we borrow money to buy something, we're paying interest. So we're paying more than what we paid for that truck or whatever. If we have designated funds in place, then we're paying for it outright and we're not putting all that percent in. So we're saving the interest that's being charged right now to the citizen. I think it gets, when you start getting into big numbers, that's a big deal.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay, can you go forward again? So this is where, do you wanna go forward on this?
I'm going for Doug.
Yeah, I think one?
This is the next one.
Okay. One thing that I wanted to try and show everybody, and this may or may not be easy for you, but if you look at the debt service levy, it's been going up. It was twenty-six percent, it's thirty-one, it's thirty-four, it's thirty-seven, and it's going to thirty-eight. So our debt service is going up as a proportion to what the budget is. And so the objective is to probably try and not do that. The orange down here is showing how we've been slowly eroding our equity, be it landfill funds, be it fund balance that we're eating up that should be there and left for the next year to maybe keep our, the other thing is, if you look, I didn't even do this, but one of my issues throughout my three years sitting out there was we had budgets being proposed and we say the levy is three percent increase. And then, but you look at the budget and it's like eight percent increase. And I'm going, okay, that doesn't make sense. But it makes sense if you think about the levy's limited. And if we just point to that, it looks good. But our cost, our taxpayer cost is going up. And my intent is to try and control that, control it and bring it down where we can and keep it reasonable. We don't need to be spending more money than we need to. So that's what this does. You can kind of see, so we've been just continuing to rob here our equity. The green, you can kind of see is its other revenue. And I'm not quite sure why this one's up at this point, but the gray loan proceeds, you can see, is kind of going up. This is a plug to just make the whole number balance at whatever our top-line revenue is. That's why that's put in there.
Chair Jones?
Yes, ma'am.
The reason there was the bump is because of act twelve, there was an huge increase in shared revenue.
So we, this is shared revenue piece here?
It's part of that.
Cool. That's a good thing. Any questions on this? Just a data point. Can you move, please, to? All right, so actions to reduce. There's two initiatives, in my view, for twenty-twenty-six. We've gotta put some scrutiny on the operations. And that's the structural, that's the half-a-million-dollar structural revenue deficit. So we're looking at health insurance plan investigation to see if we can bring that down. If we can bring that down to fifty to a hundred thousand bucks, that's a hundred off the top of that number. If we do a deep dive, these are some of the big increases I saw. If the computer is not a huge amount of money, but it was a high percentage, we need to understand what we're doing in that area. Law enforcement is up fifty-seven percent in forty years and we need to look at that. Fire is up two-hundred-and-fifteen and two-eighty-six on rescue from twenty-twenty-two. That's what I have up here, I believe, right now.
So that's capital and operating on fire and rescue?
Yes, that's just the overall cost. Yeah, that's both. But, so the problem is though, that's impacting us in a big way. And so we gotta get control of it. And you know, if you talk through upstate, they're gonna tell you that everybody's dealing with this fire and rescue thing. But the issue, that's not a cop-out for me. That's, we need to deal with it. You don't just say, everybody's dealing with that, so let's just borrow more money or whatever. It doesn't make sense. We gotta get, gotta get control of it. So I think we need to focus in those areas. And then I wanna do a level load town budget for this capital, which will come out of this effort here. And then I want to look at, I don't know if we'll get to it or if it makes sense, but if there's a way to restructure debt, bring it all together, get it at two or three percent, which is what I'm thinking, we can really lower what we're getting impacted, especially if we get control of our borrowing and we know what we're doing. I think that's important. So I think that comes along with really getting a handle on our business or our municipality. I talked, I was in the private sector. So owner's equity is the number I was trying to come up with. In a business, owner's equity is the equity piece that as you, if I sell X and I can bring in a cost below X, the difference is what pays for overhead and goes into profit. And if you're not using it, goes in on owner's equity. That is kind of what our fund balance is. It's sort of in that equity area. And then the second major thing, which has already been started, we have a fund four-hundred, like Clerk Buchanan said. That is gonna have all those things. Remember, I had all those yellow things? Those are gonna be put in this fund. We're gonna see very clearly, when you give a financial report, you're gonna say, on four-hundred, that's all capital. So the issue would be, are we borrowing for that capital? And how much of it, it should not be over the capital. That should not be the case. We should not be borrowing for operational. It's not if you're fiscally responsible. So long-term capital planning, I just spoke of, we're gonna be working on. It's a kind of a spreadsheet that you lay out all your purchases over twenty years or twenty-five years. Try and look at where it's gonna fall and then come up with a level load that would allow you to pay for that without borrowing huge amounts of money. That would mean we'd be making, taxpayers would be making a contribution to pay that in the future rather than paying interest after the fact. That's the concept. And that's called capital planning. The ultimate goal is to level load. I don't, I don't like peaks and valleys because you never know if you can afford it or not. So it's better to control that. Any questions on any, yes, ma'am?
Just to be glaring, two-hundred percent just seems like an awful large percent increase. What is making up that? Is that the truck, the new trucks?
No, so there's a couple of factors.
We're on full-time.
Full-time paid, not volunteer. So that happened around twenty-two and that's when this started, that's when I started screaming uncle and bringing concerns about then buying atomic capital. And then we just kept moving forward at that point. So that's main, a main focus is the fire.
When they went full-time, the chief is bringing everything up to standard. And that is what's, why that number is so big.
And what can you do with that?
Nothing.
Well, I kept hearing, again, when I was sitting over there, I kept hearing, it's an unfunded mandate that we have to do this. Well, you talk to people that are in the business of doing this stuff, the F, what is it, FP, NFPA?
Yeah.
Is a standard. It's a standard, like ISO nine-thousand. I used to live by standards. We used to audit the standards, right? A standard's a standard, it's not a certification, it's not a law. So one of the things in talking with other people, I know North Shore is a pretty, pretty gold standard type of fire district. One of the things is like a tank for breathing going into a fire.
A CVA?
Yeah, but the point is, we can buy one tank. And if the tank certifies, if an old tank certifies and it's past its age, it can still be used. There's no reason that everything has to be branded. And there's no reason why everything has to be up to that standard. So I think there's some area there that we can probably have some impact. I don't think you're gonna get all of that with that solution. But you asked for how we deal with it. There's one area to make sure we're not going farther than we absolutely need to be safe and deliver the services to the public. I don't know that we might not have gone a little far.
And of that percentage, how much of that is capital?
I, I have to go back now.
Like this year, the capital for fire is nine-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand and operational is forty-five thousand.
For fire?
For fire. EMS is around two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand for, for operational and I think the two-hundred thousand or something.
Two-hundred and twenty or something?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
The reason why I bring that up is I, again, I don't, I'm not sitting on this board, I don't pay much attention to what goes on. But I did a little bit of research and it sounds like a lot of other municipalities in the state aren't using that fire and whatever fee pretty typically. I mean, it sounds like a lot of places are going to that. You know, to me, as a resident, to pay a hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty dollars more a year to give us a full-time good service for fires doesn't seem as bad as a tax increase of one percent. And the reason why I say that is we live on a lake. Our house is worth two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but our land is worth a million. So we're getting a hit, we're getting a heavy hit every time the taxes go up. But if we only have to pay an additional hundred, two-hundred dollars, that's more palatable.
The one thing that really took the wind out of my sail on that is we can't use a fee for capital.
But you can use it for another percentage.
It's only the forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, but maybe you lower the amount you're gonna be doing and chip away, chip away.
The issue is we lower our levy limit, which is going to permanently restrict us from taxing going forward. So we're not, it's not like we're adding something. We're actually taking something away to add something. And then what we're adding is so minimal compared to what we're taking away, it starts being just? and then what we're adding is so minimal compared to what we're taking away, it starts being just, I, I don't even know why a fee exists, quite frankly, for fires, I just don't get it. When they say you can't use it for capital, and it lowers your levy limit, I just don't understand how that is enough.
It's unproductive.
Maybe you're going on the rescue either.
And you can't use it for rescue either.
They don't show you that our levy limit, if we do the fire fee, goes down basically a million dollars, but we're only gaining three hundred fifty, four hundred fifty thousand dollars by doing the fire district fee. And then, we'd have to do that fee every year, and, and always lose that levy. You can never go back up to that one point three million, just to get one hundred and thirty-five.
But, but the other thing, and I appreciate Ty, I appreciate you fighting for the formula of the village, because once again, the lakes bring a lot of tax revenue, but it's really an unfair revenue because the majority of the tax base is land. It's not, I mean, our purely little two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it's not fair that we keep having to pay the bulk of the fees, you know, and it's like we're gonna get costed out of our property, and it's something that we inherited, and people from Illinois are building huge homes, and they're not getting the same hit as, you know, that land. That land is, it's an unfair disadvantage to people that live on a lake. And, and that, and I think that's a letting for the villagers, that maybe you just compare the actual property, you know, with the buildings rather than the land.
The, the other thing that's being worked at is, through Mavis and maybe some agreements, we establish fees for surrounding communities when we, when they call us for fire or rescue, right? Are we charging enough for those fees at the fire district?